At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. In the absence of Ms. Cook, I will be with you tonight. And if you would please stand with me for the invocation at this time. Most gracious Father in heaven, we come before you this evening to say thank you for all that you've given us, for the ability to be here, to work with the students of Brunswick County, to support the instructional teams and other teams that work with the students of Brunswick County, for they are our future. We pray, heavenly Father, that you will give us the wisdom and the guidance to move forward in making Brunswick County schools the best they can be. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay, thank you. And at this time, we will have the presentation of color and pledge of allegiance by the West Brunswick JROTC.
Close colors. Ready, run. Center, face. Rees and arms. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Center, face. Forward march.
If you'll be seated, please. And at this time, we will have board salutes for success in our schools.
Hello, hello, good evening, everybody. What I wanted to do, what we wanted to do, was kind of highlight, spend like two or three minutes each board meeting highlighting some of the successes, making social media or in the news each month, because I'm always sharing it, but I know not everybody is on Facebook or catches a news link. So two or three minutes a week, we'll call it success in our schools. It puts a smile on my face. We'll start with a little Teacher of the Week awards. We have been, we know that we got amazing educators in Brunswick County schools. One of the local news outlets spotlights them, it's a nomination process. And what we have happen is, you know, maybe once a month, we get one of our educators featured, but we got not one, but wait, there's more, two, back-to-back. So we started with Jessica Milligan, an exceptional children's teacher at Shalope Middle. She was in the spotlight, a two-minute feature in the news two weeks ago. And then last week, so that's Shalope Middle, then last week, Virginia Williamson making the news as the Teacher of the Week. This is Riley Higgins, the stingray. She was featured for her technology, her use of technology for 21st century learners. Both of those segments are available on the WWAY website. They're really good, and you know, you hear from the principals, you hear from the educator, you hear from the students. So it's a good thing going on also. In case you haven't heard, and Principal Vicki Smith happens to be in the audience today, but it's always been said, the sun is shining, always shining at Union Elementary and the U.S. Department of Education is seeing that too, they're hearing all about it. North Carolina has been nominated, or North Carolina, rather, nominated Union to be a national blue ribbon school as an exemplary high-performing school. Union, one of only nine nominated in the entire state. We will find out, we will be, let's just say, I'll say, we'll be hanging up a big old banner later this year. But Vicki Smith, Principal Vicki Smith, she continues to do absolutely wonderful things down there in Dolphinville. Okay, in case you hadn't heard, over this past weekend, history was made at Leland Middle School. The Tech Tigers are the robotics team. They've never been to the first Lego League state championship. Well, they came in second in the regionals, and this past weekend, they went to the state finals, and they placed first in core values teamwork. So they've got a first-place finish in the state finals, and that's pretty remarkable, being that they had, they missed a lot of their practice time due to the hurricane, you know, critical time. So they had to come, once we got back in the swing of things, they came through, and they came through big time. And then finally, each week, I won't play the video, but what we've started doing is at least one feature a week inside one of our schools featuring something really fantastic going on. This one, I just used this example, this was from a feature we did called "The Writing Is On The Wall," the art teacher out there in the restrooms, where, you know, in schools in general, sometimes students don't write the nicest things on the restrooms, bad for them, but good for West Brunswick. They have these fantastic slogans. You see this one, "Choose to be optimistic, it feels better, positivity is contagious, try it today." This feature, just so you know, has been reached by more than 32,000 people in social media land, so it gets a lot of exposure. We're going to continue these, and that's it. I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. We are very blessed in Brunswick County to have a talent pool of teachers, students, and community that works with and serves in our system and for our system. At this time, we have a public address. Ms. Hillary Garver.
Ms. Garver, I'm going to ask the board attorney, Rick Green, to share with you the information prior to the presentation.
Sure.
Ms. Garver, I am Rick Green, I'm the attorney for Brunswick County Board of Education. As far as public address is concerned, it's governed by policy 2310, I'm just going to summarize it, but reading from discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, and other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in open forum setting. The chairperson will have the opportunity to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and rule the speaker out of line, or out of order if necessary. The public address is limited to five minutes, and if you could stay under that, that would be great. All right.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Hillary Garver. I have two girls at Southport Elementary School in second and fourth grade. Education is very important to my family. I have been involved with Southport Elementary Schools PTA since we moved here. I was on the executive board for three years, I have been the book fair chair for the last five years. I am here tonight to ask you to reconsider your decision to cancel all Brunswick County field trips for this school year. Field trips are educational, that is why they are worked into the school's calendar every year. Teachers use them to reinforce their curriculum, their plans, and their standards. One criteria for requesting a field trip is to identify portions of the curriculum that it will support and enrich. It is important to our teachers, it is important to teach our children that learning happens all day, every day, not just in the classroom. And shouldn't we trust our educators who are spending hours with our children every week to see if this decision is right for them? It has been brought to my attention that about two-thirds of Brunswick County students and their families live below the poverty line. If they don't attend these field trips, many of them will not go. When an entire grade goes on a field trip, we are putting all of the children on a level playing field. They are receiving the same opportunities. There are students that live an hour away from here that have never seen the ocean. Hurricane Florence was a huge setback for our community. In addition to lost instruction time, families lost income. Parents were not able to work, they had damage to their homes, they had to spend money to evacuate. Because of Hurricane Florence, it will now be harder for families who are already struggling to provide these learning experiences for their children. Many of these planned field trips are free or very little cost. North Carolina Museum of History, the State House, Fort Caswell, the police station, the library, the post office, the battleship, all of our forts and battlegrounds. We are teaching students about their community and its history. We are teaching them to be good stewards of their environment. We are teaching them about new occupations that they may not have even known existed. When we expose students to new experiences, it gives us the opportunity to broaden their worldview. It allows us to challenge their status quo and build a brighter future for Brunswick County. Someone once told me, "You only know what you know." It is our job to be good stewards of our children's education, and that includes being well-rounded. I was told by Dr. Oats the reason field trips were canceled was due to lost instruction time. I'm not suggesting that you lengthen the school year, I'm not suggesting that you cancel spring break, but I am having a really hard time with this reasoning. Because on one hand, you're saying that out of the 19 days we missed, we only need to make up six. But on the other hand, you're saying that field trips are canceled due to lost instruction time. We all know that students are more than a test score, just like we know that an education is more than a classroom. We don't want to build test takers, we want to build thinkers. So please, I strongly urge you to reconsider and reinstate field trips for Brunswick County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Garver. At this time, we'll have Ms. Claire Harrington.
Our Brunswick County Teacher of the Year with Teacher's Voice.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Oats and any of the board members that would like to come and shake hands with these amazing people. For those of you that do not know, the Service Above Self Award are for those who go above and beyond the call of duty and demonstrate service above self in the course of their responsibilities. We extend our gratitude for their exemplary dedication of their time and talents for the betterment of Brunswick County schools. And I know that because of flu season, and there are a few that are not here today, and there are a few that have representatives to come up and receive their award for them as well. Our first is Aldrina Johnson. As a parent facilitator at Belleville Elementary School, Ms. Johnson does everything from coordinating volunteers, organizing clothing and food donations, and played a pivotal role during the hurricane helping our community. She has built relationships with local businesses to ensure student and community members have what they need. She helps teachers and staff with chores and makes life easier for all. Belleville is a better place each day Ms. Johnson enters the building. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Next, we have Shelley McDowell. Ms. McDowell keeps West Brunswick High School running like a well-oiled machine. Her kindness and positive attitude make her seem like a school mom to many students who seek her out for support and encouragement. She is an integral part of Brunswick High School, West Brunswick High School. Next, we have Kevin Marsh. Kevin goes out of his way to help students and staff as a custodian at South Brunswick High School. He volunteers time to work with students in the Exceptional Children's Program to teach them the skills in his job. He shows great patience, training them to sweep among other skills needed in the workforce. He is greatly appreciated for all he does for South Brunswick High School. Next, we have Wendy Jones. Wendy leads in Southport Elementary School through her example of love and kindness. As a first responder, her quick thinking during a medical emergency and her sense of calmness and caring saved a child from further complications by FaceTiming the school nurse who was off-campus to administer medication and monitor the student while reading to calm him. Southport is blessed to have Wendy as a mentor for students and motivator for staff. And lastly, we have Ms. Roberson, first name, April Roberson. Ms. Roberson's media center is the hub of Cedar Grove Middle School. She selflessly gives her time for tasks that require extensive planning. She creates fun, exciting reading challenges for students and adults. She has made her space where everyone wants to be, and her Battle of the Books team is always one of the best because she works hard and rewards them with amazing educational trips. She is the glue that holds Cedar Grove Middle School together. Thank you very much.
Outstanding. That's a good opportunity to share all the good things that are happening in our schools. Future-ready leadership. Mr. Jonathan Pascal and Kimberly Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Milligan, Dr. Oats, members of the board. We appreciate everything you do in our community, and of course, for our students. Dr. Oats, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of the 2018-19 Future-Ready Leadership cohort. As you can see, they're actually sitting behind us now. I am Jonathan Pascal, one of the assistant principals at West Brunswick High School. This is Kimberly Brown, one of the assistant principals at North Brunswick High School. You all chose to provide future-ready leadership as a professional development for our assistant principals. Not only that, you brought it to our district. For that and that investment, it has given us an empowerment as leaders and also provided us with the tools needed to be able to propel our school, our students, and our faculty forward. Sorry. For those who participated, you can see there up here on the board, we also have most of them behind us. Future-ready leadership has clarified our important role as school administrators, provided collaboration opportunities that may not have otherwise been available, motivated us as leaders to innovate and take calculated risk, infused similar best practices, and it has equipped us as leaders for future-ready schools.
The Future-Ready Leadership Program was designed for assistant principals by the North Carolina Principal and Assistant Principal Association. Future-ready leadership is aligned with the performance evaluation standards, is cohort-driven, and creates an environment for collaboration and deep conversation. The program consists of six full days of sessions. A few takeaways are, session one, we discuss leadership competencies, the skills and behaviors that contribute to great performance. We talked about what balanced leadership looks like, and realized that although we may not possess all of the qualities, working on a good team, these qualities can be shared. Another session looked closely at creating authentic professional learning communities. As roles as a leader in the PLCs, how to create culture for sharing teaching strategies that would result in organizational learning. One session covered an array of topics to include public positive behavior intervention support, engagement versus compliance, managing conflict, and building relationships. This session talked about the importance of including stakeholders, bringing in the communities, churches, local businesses, and parents, and allowing them to be a part of the decision-making process. And one of my favorites, session four, discussing appropriate instructional coaching language. During this session, we were asked to bring encompass of our walkthrough forms for our colleagues. We then role-played a post-conference from a short video that we watched. As a result, we realized the powerful impact of having a conversation exhibiting relaxed posture and open communication, as well as maintaining an even tone of voice when given positive feedback and/or constructive criticism. This session played a very integral part of the Future-Ready Leadership Program. Without these components, administrators in Brunswick County schools would not be as effective at providing triple E leadership. Empower, encourage, expect.
After polling our cohort, we received only positive reflections about the experience. As you can see on the screen, we have a few, I'd like to read them for you. "I now feel comfortable in my position as a leader and confident that I can do the job at hand. Future-ready leadership gave us invaluable time to reflect and grow as professionals. The ideas and strategies shared from the amazing presenters have stacked my administrative toolbox. Each session has given me ideas to bring back to my school. In closing, we sincerely want to thank each of you for bringing this program to Brunswick County. Your foresight and willingness to invest in us as leaders is truly an investment in our students. Thank you."
Such an important part of effective schools. Each standard, each quality that was mentioned, these are the things that must be exhibited every day in order to have an effective school leader. And I can look at this group and tell, you guys have got it going on. Thank you. And girls.
Madam Chair, if I could, just wanted to let these folks know here that I can appreciate the effort that you gave, because many of these sessions, I tried to get into as many as I could, and just to sit and watch you as you collaborated with each other and just talk about leadership was well worth the investment. And then to go to your schools and see that these tenants that you learned in FRL did not stay in the professional development room that you were taking these courses in, you went back to your schools and implemented the things that you were doing. So that is something that I just want to applaud you on, and I look forward to more development of your leadership as we go forward. So thank you.
At this time, we would like to have Dr. Shirley Prince, NC Papa Executive Director, Tom Benton, FRL State Coordinator.
Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight, and I just want to say, I'm just so impressed already with your board meeting. I mean, so positive and really celebrating your successes, I think that's so important. Dr. Oats, I want to commend you for having the foresight to invest in your leaders. We all know, those of us that have been in education for many years, that it's really all about leadership. And it's so important to be proactive and to really have that pipeline of leaders. Because you've invested in your assistant principals, you have a very bright future for your principal pipeline. Looking back, you can see a lot of potential there. And we at NC Papa believe that every assistant principal should aspire to be a principal. We do not believe in lifelong assistant principals. We encourage all of our assistant principals to prepare themselves to be able to hit the ground running, because we believe at NC Papa, it's all about school leadership. You can have a great school, and you send a mediocre principal to that school, and pretty soon, that school will become mediocre. You can have a mediocre school, and you send a great principal to that school, and in short order, it will be great. That is our philosophy at NC Papa. That is our philosophy that we try to instill in all of our professional development participants. We have two signature programs. One is the one we're celebrating tonight, Future-Ready Leadership. We have another one for practicing principals. Your own Molly White has been through that, and I'm sure several of your other folks. And by the way, congratulations for bringing Molly on, she'll do a great job for you, I'm sure. I'm sad that she's not going to be among the principal ranks anymore, but she'll do a great job in this role. But we really believe that both of those programs are critical for our people. We have almost 1,000 alumni, so now we can add this wonderful group from Brunswick County to our alumni. So thank you again for inviting us to your district. Thank you for allowing us to be, play a small part in your vision for great leaders for your school. And I want to personally thank Tom Benton, who we would not be able to do without. He coordinates all of our Future-Ready Leadership programs. Tom?
Thank you all, and thank you for investing in the program. Thank Dr. Prince, she had this vision about eight years ago, that when she became Executive Director of NC Papa, that assistant principals were sort of the overlooked group. They're the people who stay back at schools when principals go off for training, and then you have training for teachers, but they were often overlooked. And so our guide is to help prepare them for the principalship, but also make sure that as they're serving as assistant principals, that they are truly a contributing part of a leadership team. Thanks to Dr. Oats for having the foresight to offer this to all of the assistant principals in Brunswick County. You're one of only two counties, you never was the other one to do that. The other systems send their people off to Chapel Hill and Raleigh. And as Dr. Prince mentioned, we have almost 1,000 alumni, 989. And when I saw the number, I thought, I should have cheated and said 1,000 and been through this. But I can tell you, from watching and interacting with all of those 989, you're blessed to have the group of AP cohorts that you have here. They were engaged, they were energetic, they're smart, they've got a passion for doing a good job for kids in your community. So my hat is off to Dr. Oats for inviting us down, and for the participants who went through this program. Thank you all very much.
And now we're going to give them their certificates, please.
It's called situational leadership.
Kimberly Brown, Brunswick High School. Chris Orrock, Brunswick County Early College High School. Amy Callahan Hayes, North Brunswick High School. Amy Callahan Hayes, North Brunswick High School. Rita Harrow, Shalote Middle School. Anthony Ten Tillop, Shiloh Middle School. Ben Hayes, South Brunswick Middle School. Natalie Rowley, South Brunswick High School. Pam Pena, South Brunswick High School. I'm sorry, that's your phone, or something. Thomas Quinlan, Supply Elementary School. Sam Jennings, Union Elementary School. Katie Watson, Virginia Williamson Elementary School. Justin Hayes, Principal of Tees Grove Middle School. Johnson Pascal, West Brunswick High School. Sean Black, Lehman Middle School. Let's give our Future Ready leaders a round of applause. Testing my abilities. All right, here we go. Three, two, one. All right. Three, two, one. We're getting everybody. Three, two, one. All right. Thank you all.
At this time, Ms. White will present the first draft of the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to Dr. Oats and the board tonight. That's kind of a rough act to follow right there for my first board presentation, so I have the pleasure this evening of presenting the first drafts of the calendar. Just to quickly summarize, our goal was to do a redo on what we tried to do for this school year. We obviously spent a lot of time as a district coming up with an innovative plan for the school year that Hurricane Florence obviously decided wasn't in our cards. So, what we hope to do is to do it again and have a very similar structure with a couple of new opportunities where we try to continue to be creative through this process. So, the stakeholder committee meeting occurred on January 30th. On January 10th, and I think, so Claire is here as well, as well as Dr. Hessman, Mr. Taylor from Transportation, Jessica Bracta from Child Nutrition, and Mr. Siemens as well, our team got together to develop and brainstorm some ideas just to look at any creative opportunities we have. We came with a draft to then the January 30th meeting, and at that meeting, you can see, we had three members and four, including Claire, from the Teacher Advisory Council. We had three parents that were PAC presidents. We had one school administrator and two additional staff members from Central Services that came as well to that meeting. That was open to all TAC and PAC presidents and school administrators and Central Services administrators. So, anyone was welcome and was invited to come to that meeting so that we would have as much feedback as possible. So, we appreciate the folks that put the time into this meeting. So, just to review again the background, in the 1718 school year, at a county PAC meeting, there was some conversations about looking into what we could do to get to a school year that ended the first semester by the time students were released for Christmas break. So, through that process, there was a draft put together, and we'll talk about stakeholder surveying was done, and as a result, we were able to meet the requirements with the calendar that was in place for this year. Obviously, as we said, as we all know, that did not work out. Again, we looked at the same calendar requirements. We have to have 215 contractual days from beginning to end, and then the certain amount of teacher workdays covering the nine months. We know that we have to start school closest to August 26th, which is August 26th this year, you'll see in just a minute, and we exceed the 1,025 instructional hours. So, we were able to do that with the two drafts. Going back, again, just want to remind everyone that this was fully endorsed by TAC last year, and principals, 95% of school improvement teams approved it, as well as the external surveys to staff members, parents, and students, all exceeding 80%. And that was a really nice turnout in surveying for our community. So, you could tell it's an area that's important to our stakeholders. The calendar saves approximately $15,000 a day in transportation. It's not the reason this was made, but you always want to look at some of the benefits of it as well. There are also several counties that also attempted this calendar this year. Some had better luck than others. So, the proposed calendars have all the same amount of days and minutes within them. There's two that we're going to look at briefly. They all have 172 instructional days. If we count 380 instructional minutes in our day, that's taking out things like lunch. We are extending it with 1,089 hours of instruction. Excuse me. So, a few things that we're talking about for the calendar for next year is, Dr. Oats has been really excited about the idea of having a convocation where we can celebrate the start to next school year, and really kind of take a pep rally attitude to it, and really bring our community together because our start was so challenging this year. I think we're all really excited about that fresh start. Another innovative thing that came out of the meeting on the 30th was the idea to look at moving our open houses just basically by a day. High school principals have met and have agreed, if this calendar is approved, to move their open house to Monday, with middle school on Tuesday, and Wednesday is elementary school. Currently, we do Wednesdays and Thursdays for open house. We have elementary and high school on the same day. Parent feedback at that meeting was that that's a lot for parents, especially if they're coming after work to be able to make it at both schools. And then, Transportation requested we try to stay away from Thursday as they are trying to put together bus schedules from open house. So, they work all weekend, and we'd like to maybe take a couple hours off that work for them. They're going to have to do that anyway, but giving them one more day to process all the bus requests from the open house. And I can tell you, there are many, many that come at that time or in those last two days. They are doing routes to the last minute. It's a really hectic time for transportation between that and getting through that first week of school. It's tough. We also have, because of the 215 days, a good amount of time at the end of the school year that's built in for the summer opportunity for remediation and testing. So, that being said, we have two drafts to look at today. And they are labeled, and maybe going to come up, as, one is with polling stations. So, let me tell you about the history of this. We lack so much flexibility, thanks. We lack so much flexibility within the current calendar structure that we are tied to two more days because of polling in November and March. So, Ms. Rutledge has been talking with the Board of Elections. They meet again on February 17th, right, I believe, which is the day before our committee meetings. And they are going to get back to us on the options that we might have to be able to have schools open on polling days and move workdays to more optimal days for teachers. We really want to prioritize their time in the classroom. If we can make this change with the polls, then we'll be able to have workdays at the end of each quarter. It's a very pivotal time for our teachers as they're transitioning to the next quarter with grades and all those things. So, these are the two drafts that you have been presented with, and they are basically the difference of them, you'll see, is the day in March and the day in November. There are no other changes between the two drafts. They have the same number of school days, same start, same finish. Here's one. So, this is the one where we have no polls in this school. Okay. Thank you. So, if you look at the draft in this situation, teachers come back to school on August 12th with workdays that are very flexible within that first week, and then the following week, on the 19th, we would look at possibly doing the convocation then when we have all staff back with us, but still with a non-mandatory workday in that first week. Students would then begin on August 26th, and the next change we talked about is if we were able to move the November 5th polling time, that actually is what was now the October 21st workday. That is at the end of the first quarter. The next change then, or the next break, is the same with the three days in November with the AVL day and then the two holidays, and then the same winter break as was offered this year. That begins with a workday and then ends with two workdays. The next change happens in March in regards to the election, and so, you will now see that there would be a workday right before, on February 28th, before the end of the third quarter, which is March 2nd. Students' last day would be the 28th of May, which would afford us the opportunity to then have some mandatory workdays in regards to us to do some remediation with students, as well as an opportunity for professional development, doing a blend of both of those The other calendar then puts the November 5th and March 3rd election days back in. Our biggest issue with that is at Belleville Elementary, we are not able to be able to have polls there and school at the same time because of the overcrowding of the school and the lack of parking. Any questions?
Do we have these built in for hurricanes?
So, the same thing. Well, yeah, we are over our hours, which is, I think afforded us quite a few days, but additionally, we also have some workdays. One of the great ideas that came from the TAC members at the meeting is, at that next meeting, we're going to prioritize the workdays if we can, where teachers would like for us to use them if we have to use them. We may not have a choice. It just depends on when any kind of closing falls. Obviously, at the beginning of the year, we have different flexibility than this time last year when we were closed for, what, almost a week? So, unfortunately, having to start with the August 26th, it really, really ties this schedule and gives us very little flexibility. It was a fun challenge, though. Any other questions?
19's municipal elections, correct? And then, we would talk that in March, we would be the general election primary, so that will be definitely can't have kids, because it's going to be busy.
Correct.
Correct.
That's correct. Are we giving them early vote, are they requesting early voting access in Belleville?
Not to my knowledge, no.
That's way early to, I think, they may, with the early voting, they may not use the schools. It's usually on the general election day.
Could have lost on the early.
Yeah. So, well, we just need to have a meeting with them prior to the Board of Elections. I wish they could find another facility. It's just difficult.
Yeah. All right. If there's no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. At this time, we'll take a 10-minute break. At this time, we will look at approving minutes, the agenda for this meeting.
Make a motion, approve the meeting agenda?
Mr. Miller's made the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Lemon has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. So, we will approve that, and now we have the approval of minutes from prior meetings. January 8th, regular meeting. January 22nd, Curriculum and Policy Committee. January 22nd, Operations Committee. January 22nd, Finance and Human Resource Committee.
Motion approved.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Lemon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have some consent items for approval. Number one, audit contract renewal. Number two, budget amendments. Number three, policy on second reading, 7,900 resignation.
Motion to approve consent. And just so the audience knows, we do discuss all these in depth in our committee meetings, so it's not like we're not reading these things.
Second.
Okay. So, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we will have discussion and announcement by superintendent and board members. Dr. Oats?
Just briefly, just wanted to bring to your attention the All County Course Honors Concert this Thursday at Odell Williamson at 7:00 PM. No charge for that. We're just asking that anyone that comes to bring a non-perishable food item for the local Brunswick County food pantries. Also, just wanted to give you an update on our success with our digital library. If you remember, last month, we discussed the implementation of our digital library that allows all of our students, our staff, and just the community to access our library from any digital device. And since January 7th, we've circulated 2,851 books, including 2,100 eBooks and 749 audio books. So, that's a lot of reading that's going on in Brunswick County schools. I also wanted to bring to light one of our top students, some of our top students, reading between 18 and 80 titles out of our digital library. Kevin Lawrence Jr. at Town Creek Elementary, Walker Dillman at Addison Milligan from Town Creek and Shalote Middle School, Michaela Messamore from Southport, Anthony Wood at Town Creek, Logan Kennedy at Town Creek, Kara Messamore at Southport, Miguel Medel from Union, Marley Andres from Jesse May, and Kalen Callahan from Town Creek Elementary. All of these students read between 18 and 80 titles solely from our digital library. And we have five top staff members who have been reading as well. Jenny Jones out of Shalote Middle School, and Jacqueline Coontz out of Transportation, Samantha Ward from Town Creek, Angela Bunce, which is a school nurse, and Leanne Arlesia from Transportation. So, it's not just our students, with the culture of reading is spreading to our employees as well. And lastly, I wanted to give you the board visit date. You know, when we go around to various schools, if you would put on your calendar or talk to Jill about February 22nd, that would be the next scheduled board visit date. So, those will conclude any announcements that I have.
Any announcements by board members? At this time, can I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that we enter a closed session as allowed by the statute.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we will enter closed session.